Welcome to the February 21st, 2023, public hearing. Irika, could we please have roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Would we all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. And a vote.
I don't have a vote thing. No circle.
Eva agrees with everything we say for the rest of the day.
I have no circle.
All right, can we do a verbal?
Our IT specialist checked it out. I have no circle. Our IT specialist.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on. Words and presentations. All right. This time, we'd like to recognize two outstanding young women who are here today. The 2023 Adams County Fair Queen, Timberlyn Rose Whitehman, and this year's lady-in-waiting, Elsie Oswald. Will you please come to the podium? Held in October at Riverdale Regional Park, the lady-in-waiting contestants competed for the title in areas of horsemanship, personal interview, application completeness, modeling, impromptu questions, and etiquette. The lady-in-waiting holds her title for one year, then she becomes our next queen. Elsie Oswald is this year's lady-in-waiting. Elsie is a senior at Brighton High School, and she is a link leader and president of Brighton FFA. The 2023 Adams County Fair Queen is Timberlyn Rose Whitehman. Rose graduated from Brighton in 2022, is currently attending Colorado State University, majoring in agricultural education. Once again, congratulations to both of you on your accomplishments for representing Adams County Fair, since part of the competition was impromptu questions and answers. I know you can handle the pressure of public speaking. Is there anything either of you would like to say?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. I am Timberlyn Rose Whitehman, your 2023 Adams County Fair Queen, and I'd first of all like to thank our county commissioners. Eva Henry, Chaz Tedesco, Emma Pinter, Steve Odoricio, and Lynn Baca. Elsie and I are so grateful for your continued support of the Adams County Fair and royalty program. We hope the fair holds as many wonderful memories for you as it holds for us. Dust off the old boots and join us for the Adams County Fair, August 2nd through the 6th. Grab an ice cold lemonade and walk through the barns. You may even see the grand champion steer. Take a moment to check out the incredible work our exhibitors have spent on their projects, from canning to quilting. It's all here. As the sun sets on those warm fair nights, come by the grandstands. There's live entertainment every night, from the demo derby to the rockin' concerts. On your way out, take a ride on the Ferris wheel. That's the best view of our great county we call home. Board of County Commissioners, thank you so much for your continued support of the Adams County Fair. Elsie and I look forward to spending our next year representing this great county. Thank you for your time this morning.
Good morning, Adams County Board of Commissioners. My name is Elsie Oswald, and I am the 2023 Adams County Lady-in-Waiting, and I've been a proud resident of Adams County since I was a year old. Growing up, I struggled to find kids like me who shared my passion for animals and agriculture, until I discovered 4H and the Adams County Fair. It was at the fair that I found where I belonged. Whether I was showing tabletop projects like painting and art, small animals like rabbits, or large animals like horses and steers, I made amazing friends, learned about a variety of topics, and developed my leadership skills. The Adams County Fair truly has a place for everyone. Thank you County Commissioners Emma Pinter, Chaz Tedesco, Lynn Baca, Steve Odoricio, and Eva Henry for supporting the Adams County Fair and its royalty program. I am so excited to have this opportunity as lady-in-waiting to spotlight the 4H exhibitors, livestock, food, and other fun activities that make the Adams County Fair unique. Because of your support, kids like me will get to enjoy this beautiful tradition for years to come. Rose and I cannot wait to represent Adams County this year, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions, comments? Chaz Tedesco?
So I just have a question because both of you came up with lady-in-waiting sashes. What is that?
So our lady-in-waiting is Ms. Elsie Oswald this year. Our sashes have not quite come in yet, and we're hoping they will be here by coronation, so we will have correct sashes by the next time you see us.
That's awesome, and I know you guys have been doing some really good work. I follow the Facebook pages. I know Cassandra and her team are always putting it out, you know, where you're at, what you're doing. It's amazing that you're still doing everything that you're doing on top of what this, you know, the workload that this creates for you. You guys are great, and I hope to see you at the Adams County Fair. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. All right, well, let's go down and do a photo.
Commissioner Odoricio, can you all vote on that resolution?
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution recognizing Timberlyn Rose Whitehman as the 2023 Adams County Fair Queen and Elsie Oswald as the 2023 lady-in-waiting? Do we have a motion? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second?
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes. Congratulations and thank you, ladies. Okay, next up, public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Commissioner, we do have Randy Broderson signed up today, but he is here to speak to one of the new business items for North Metro Community Services.
Okay, unless Randy jumps up. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Randy Broderson here on behalf of North Metro Community Services once again to thank you all for your support of our services here in Adams County to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families. I know you have our contract for this coming year on the agenda today, so I'm a little presumptive to thank you for that as well, but I really do appreciate what you did for us last year and the large increase you gave us in funding, and just wanted to let you know that we had moved ahead as we had talked about with a grant program. We've dedicated half of that increase to crisis funding for families in Adams County who have children with ADD. We've used some of those funds to avoid evictions, to help people with car repairs so they can access important services for their children, to meet unmet medical expenses, just a variety of things that have been just a godsend for people in Adams County. So that would not have been possible without your support, and we deeply appreciate that. And I know that the people who've received those fundings, funds have deeply appreciated it. So anyway, just wanted to thank you again for your support this year and all that you've done for people with intellectual developmental disabilities in Adams County.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who did not sign up but would still like to speak? Seeing now moving on to elected officials communication. Any elected officials with high verbal needs? That's how Eva Henry puts it. None? Wow. That was not meant to stifle or... Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
We have a motion? And we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes. All right, moving on. To new business, county manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have a few items for you this morning. The first item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and FCI Constructors Incorporated in the amount of $28,552 for pre-construction costs for construction manager slash general contractor services for the Adams County South Parks Maintenance Building, RFP RP 2022.947, and Renette Carlson is here with facilities.
Good morning. Design is underway for a new building to replace the existing Park South Maintenance Building located at 9500 Riverdale Road. The new building will serve the county for at least 50 years and will accommodate the needs of several departments, including parks and open space, and community safety and well-being. A formal request for proposal was sent to the 13 general contractors who have been pre-qualified. The county received three proposals. Proposals were opened on December 8th. After a thorough evaluation by the committee, it was determined that FCI will provide the best overall value to the county. The recommendation is to award an agreement for CMGC services to FCI Constructors in the amount of $28,552 for the initial pre-construction phase of the project. The guaranteed maximum price will be finalized prior to construction.
Any questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion to approve in a second?
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Yeah, next item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and High Country Low Voltage in the amount of $495,298.51 for the Government Center Audio Visual Upgrade, RFP BF 2022.118, and Jason Schultz will present this item.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Schultz and Nick Ingmeyer with Information Technology and Innovation Group. We're just recommending that you all approve this agreement between Adams County and High Country Low Voltage. This is for the audio/video upgrade project for the conference center and also this public hearing room in the amount of $495,298.51.
Any questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion? No questions? Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between Adams County and High Country Low Voltage in the amount of $495,298.51.
Second.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
Resolution approving Amendment 1 between Adams County and CA Short Company in the amount of $480,000 to provide employee recognition software solution services, 2023.703. We have people in culture presenting. Terry Lott will cover the item. We have people in culture presenting. Terry Lott will cover the item.
Good morning Commissioners. The People and Culture Department currently uses an external employee recognition software solution to assist Adams County employees for performance-based and on-the-spot recognition. This aligns with the county's cultural competencies and commitment to employee morale and recognition as well as to incentivize healthy behavior with our wellness program. Since the implementation of Culture in Action in May of 2019, a total of 1.1 million points have been issued, 466,000 points have been redeemed, 32,000 instant award cards have been issued and redeemed, and 91,000 E-cards have been sent. As of January 1st, 2022, all departments and elected offices are utilizing the Culture in Action program to recognize the incredible work of their employees. In January of 2022, you approved a single-source agreement with CA Short Company to provide employee recognition software solution services. The continuity of services provided by CA Short Company is critical to the continued success of the Adams County's Culture in Action Recognition Program. The People and Culture Department feels that CA Short provides quality work, and the pricing is fair and reasonable. The recommendation is to approve Amendment One to extend the agreement for one additional year to provide employee recognition software solutions in the not-to-exceed amount of $480,000 for a total not-to-exceed agreement amount of $960,000. And just one point, that of the $480,000, $30,000 of that is for the administration of the software itself, and the rest is given to points to employees for recognizing them for good work.
Any questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved to approve?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second?
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes. There you go. Thank you very much.
Uh, next item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and North Metro Community Services, Inc. in the amount of $2120,512 for services for persons with developmental disabilities, 2023.507. Nancy Duncan will present.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Nancy Duncan, the Budget and Finance Director. Before you, as a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and North Metro Community Services, Inc. in the amount of $2120,512 for services for persons with developmentally, developmental disabilities. For 2023, the two-point, or I'm sorry, the .257 mill levy is projected to generate $2.5 million that is available for developmentally-disabled services. Of that amount, the county budgeted $2.1 million from the developmentally-disabled mill levy to be utilized for the benefit of persons with developmental disabilities who reside in Adams County. The majority of these funds are allocated to North Metro Community Services without a competitive process because they are the county's community-centered board organization. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve an agreement with North Metro Community Services to provide services and support for Adams County residents with developmental disabilities not to exceed the amount of $2120,512. Any questions regarding this?
Questions from staff? If not, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right. And a second?
Second. Thank you.
Well, we got a vote on it.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca? Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Yes, there you go. Thank you. Last one?
Last item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and WGM Land Design LTD in the amount of $686,275.10 for the 2022 Miscellaneous Concrete and ADA Ramp Program, Contract IFB BF 2022.128, and Crystal Carlo will present.
Good morning. I'm Crystal Carlo with Public Works. And today we have the 2022 Miscellaneous Concrete and ADA Ramp Program for you, which includes concrete maintenance, such as repair and hazard grinding, and ADA curb ramp replacement for, meaning the ADA requirements. The invitation for bid for the program was issued November 1st of 2022, and the bid closed November 22nd. We had a total of six bidders, and our recommendation to award the 2022 Miscellaneous Concrete and ADA Ramp Program is to WGM Land Design as they were the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the amount of $686,275.10. Thank you.
Hey, any questions from staff? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
County manager, that's it, right, for you? County attorney?
Good morning Commissioners. This item did not make it onto your agenda, but I would ask that we go into executive session today as time allows pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding building inspections.
Hey, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second?
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Hey, seeing that we're end of this, we want to take a 10 or 15, do we want to do the executive session now or later, team? Because if we do it now while land use sets up, we could probably do that. We'll meet back here and... Is that okay, or...? All right, we'll meet back here in 15 minutes, and we'll have a 10-minute executive session, giving everyone up here a chance for five minutes. And our land use, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Eagleson with the Community and Economic Development Department. In this morning, I'll be presenting the Adams County aviation-related tax amendments. And this is case number PLN 2022-15. The request is for tax amendments to modify the Adams County development standards and regulations, specifically Section 3-36, which is our Denver International Airport section. And this is to amend language referencing the 1988 agreement, or IGA, between Adams County and Denver regarding Denver International Airport. As some of you may recall, we brought this to you in a study session several months ago to discuss what those tax amendments look like in the specific language. And that would include referencing any sort of subsequent agreements or amendments to that IGA, instead of just currently, again, referencing specifically the 1988 agreement. When looking at the criteria for tax amendments, we look to see that it's consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan, that it's consistent with the purposes of the standards and regulations, and that it will also not be detrimental to the surrounding area. During the referral period, we sent notifications to property owners and occupants within a half-mile buffer around Denver International. No public comment was received, and we also sent this to referral agencies. We received a total of five comments in support, some of those being from Denver International, C-DOT, as well as the City of Commerce City. This went to Planning Commission to a public hearing on January 26, 2023. At that hearing, we did not receive any public comment, and Planning Commission voted to approve the request unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. So with that, staff has recommended approval of the tax amendments with three findings of fact and one condition. Here are those findings of fact, and then the one condition is that the Community and Economic Development Department may make any minor corrections to the tax amendments until March 23 of this year. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from staff, for staff? Nope, is there anyone signed up for, with the applicant? Well, we are the applicant. Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Nope, okay. Coming back to the board, do we have any discussion or a motion?
There aren't any questions. I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve? You want to read that?
Oh, I've got to read the whole thing. I'm so sorry. Got to read the fancy text amendment business. I move to approve the tax amendments with three findings of fact and one condition. Thank you for the next chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Chair, and then I just have a comment. So my only comment to this is that it is, the 1988 agreement I know will prevail, but it's important that we have the tax amendment language correct in our comprehensive plan. And I just get really nervous with this type of an update that the 1988 agreement is the originating document. It's the noise mitigation and challenges between Denver and Adams County. I know the agreement, this is not touching any part of the agreement. It is an update, but it still makes me concerned, so I would just ask staff, as you proceed forward, I didn't get to read the bottom of the March 23, 2023 changes. It looked like it was typographical, but that screenshot, that slide moved on very quickly, so. Chair, I would second that and move forward.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Odoratio?
Yes. Okay, next.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cody Spade. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. I'm here to present best box self-storage conditional use located at 6640 and 6606 Federal Boulevard. Case number RCU 2022-6. The request before you today is a conditional use permit to allow a mini storage facility in a commercial five zone. The current use on the property is outdoor storage, which is a non-conforming use to the zone district. And the proposed use is a mini storage facility, which requires a conditional use permit in the C-five district. Here's the site highlighted in blue along Federal Boulevard in between West 66th Place and West 65th Place. You should also note a similar self-storage facility to the north along West 67th Place. Here's a little bit closer view of the site. As you can see, the site is currently being used for outdoor storage. Code compliance has sent out some violations for this site because of that outdoor storage use. It should be noted that the applicant today is not the current owner of the site. However, this application would bring the site into compliance and clean up the site if approved. The current zoning for the site is C-five commercial, as well as the other properties along the Federal Boulevard corridor. It's surrounded to the east and west by R-two residential zoning. Additionally, the comprehensive plan notes this as a future land use of commercial. Commercial areas in the county are intended to serve either neighborhood or regional needs. It could be comprised of a variety of uses, including retail sales, restaurants, and other services, and professional and commercial offices. When reviewing a conditional use, the criteria that shall be considered is if the use is permitted in the zone district, consistent with the purposes of the standards, applies with performance standards, compatible and harmonious to the surrounding area, off-site impacts have been addressed, suitable site for the use, and commercial and convenient and functional layout, as well as adequate services to support the use. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. When reviewing this site plan, it does meet the C-five standards for development, including setbacks and lot requirements, as well as, we do have specific performance standards for the mini-use, storage use. Those include adequate screening of outdoor storage areas and garbage enclosures. And then reviewing for this site for our landscape standards, the landscape area required is 10% of the site. The applicant is supplying a landscape area of 22% of the site. The north, south, and west buffer yard requirements are met. However, there's a 20-foot utility easement on the east side of the site. This is an easement owned by Crestview Water and Sanitation and prohibits the planting of landscaping on top of that. The applicant has provided the required landscaping for this buffer yard elsewhere on the site, as well as a six-foot privacy fence along that eastern corridor. It should also be noted that the applicant reached out to the neighboring property to the east, which is a residence, to alleviate any concerns that they might have about screening. During the planning commission hearing, Planning Commission explored the idea of possibly moving this drive aisle out over top of the easement to provide additional landscaping. This would require collaboration with Crestview as they own the easement. This primary site plan is the one that staff is recommending for approval, but the applicant has listened to the advice of the Planning Commission and reached out to Crestview Water, who said that they have no issue with moving the drive aisle over to that easement as long as manhole covers were provided to access any utilities that may be under that, and have provided a little bit more landscaping along the east side of the building. I can let the applicant speak to, you know, the pros and cons of each site plan. During the site visit, was able to take a few photos of the site and surrounding area on the left side of the screen. On the top photo, it would be a view from Federal Boulevard looking east at the site and a view from West 66th Place looking southwest to the site. On the right side of the screen, you see views up and down Federal Boulevard, both looking north and to the south. During the referral period for this, property owners and occupants within 750 feet of the site were notified. A total of 258 notifications were sent. We did receive one public comment in opposition. They noted the other storage facility in the area and, you know, preferred a less redundant use for this site. During the referral period for referral agents, we sent out referrals to each agency within a mile of the site, and these following agencies responded without concern. During the Planning Commission hearing on January 26, the Planning Commission voted unanimous approval for eight findings of fact, four conditions, and one note to the applicant. So in summary, staff does feel this conforms to the performance standards. It's compatible with the surrounding area. They've addressed the off-site impact and services are available. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with eight findings of fact, four recommended conditions, and one note. These are the recommended conditions, including the expiration date of February 21, 2038, and a recommended note that they shall comply with all building zoning fire, engineering, health codes, and regulations during the development of the site. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thanks.
Any questions for staff? For staff? Nope. Is there anyone signed up for, with the applicant? Well, we are the applicant. Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Nope. Okay. Coming back to the board, do we have any discussion or a motion?
There aren't any questions. I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve? You want to read that?
Oh, I've got to read the whole thing. I'm so sorry. Got to read the fancy text amendment business. I move to approve the tax amendments with three findings of fact and one condition. Thank you for the next chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Chair, and then I just have a comment. So my only comment to this is that it is, the 1988 agreement I know will prevail, but it's important that we have the tax amendment language correct in our comprehensive plan. And I just get really nervous with this type of an update that the 1988 agreement is the originating document. It's the noise mitigation and challenges between Denver and Adams County. I know the agreement, this is not touching any part of the agreement. It is an update, but it still makes me concerned, so I would just ask staff, as you proceed forward, I didn't get to read the bottom of the March 23, 2023 changes. It looked like it was typographical, but that screenshot, that slide moved on very quickly, so. Chair, I would second that and move forward.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoratio?
Yes. Okay, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Eagleson with the Community and Economic Development Department. In this morning, I'll be presenting the Adams County aviation-related tax amendments. And this is case number PLN 2022-15. The request is for tax amendments to modify the Adams County development standards and regulations, specifically Section 3-36, which is our Denver International Airport section. And this is to amend language referencing the 1988 agreement, or IGA, between Adams County and Denver regarding Denver International Airport. As some of you may recall, we brought this to you in a study session several months ago to discuss what those tax amendments look like in the specific language. And that would include referencing any sort of subsequent agreements or amendments to that IGA, instead of just currently, again, referencing specifically the 1988 agreement. When looking at the criteria for tax amendments, we look to see that it's consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan, that it's consistent with the purposes of the standards and regulations, and that it will also not be detrimental to the surrounding area. During the referral period, we sent notifications to property owners and occupants within a half-mile buffer around Denver International. No public comment was received, and we also sent this to referral agencies. We received a total of five comments in support, some of those being from Denver International, C-DOT, as well as the City of Commerce City. This went to Planning Commission to a public hearing on January 26, 2023. At that hearing, we did not receive any public comment, and Planning Commission voted to approve the request unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. So with that, staff has recommended approval of the tax amendments with three findings of fact and one condition. Here are those findings of fact, and then the one condition is that the Community and Economic Development Department may make any minor corrections to the tax amendments until March 23 of this year. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from staff, for staff? Nope. Is there anyone signed up for, with the applicant? Well, we are the applicant. Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Nope. Okay. Coming back to the board, do we have any discussion or a motion?
There aren't any questions. I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve? You want to read that?
Oh, I've got to read the whole thing. I'm so sorry. Got to read the fancy text amendment business. I move to approve the tax amendments with three findings of fact and one condition. Thank you for the next chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Chair, and then I just have a comment. So my only comment to this is that it is, the 1988 agreement I know will prevail, but it's important that we have the tax amendment language correct in our comprehensive plan. And I just get really nervous with this type of an update that the 1988 agreement is the originating document. It's the noise mitigation and challenges between Denver and Adams County. I know the agreement, this is not touching any part of the agreement. It is an update, but it still makes me concerned, so I would just ask staff, as you proceed forward, I didn't get to read the bottom of the March 23, 2023 changes. It looked like it was typographical, but that screenshot, that slide moved on very quickly, so. Chair, I would second that and move forward.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Odoratio?
Yes. Okay, next.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cody Spade. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. I'm here to present best box self-storage conditional use located at 6640 and 6606 Federal Boulevard. Case number RCU 2022-6. The request before you today is a conditional use permit to allow a mini storage facility in a commercial five zone. The current use on the property is outdoor storage, which is a non-conforming use to the zone district. And the proposed use is a mini storage facility, which requires a conditional use permit in the C-five district. Here's the site highlighted in blue along Federal Boulevard in between West 66th Place and West 65th Place. You should also note a similar self-storage facility to the north along West 67th Place. Here's a little bit closer view of the site. As you can see, the site is currently being used for outdoor storage. Code compliance has sent out some violations for this site because of that outdoor storage use. It should be noted that the applicant today is not the current owner of the site. However, this application would bring the site into compliance and clean up the site if approved. The current zoning for the site is C-five commercial, as well as the other properties along the Federal Boulevard corridor. It's surrounded to the east and west by R-two residential zoning. Additionally, the comprehensive plan notes this as a future land use of commercial. Commercial areas in the county are intended to serve either neighborhood or regional needs. It could be comprised of a variety of uses, including retail sales, restaurants, and other services, and professional and commercial offices. When reviewing a conditional use, the criteria that shall be considered is if the use is permitted in the zone district, consistent with the purposes of the standards, applies with performance standards, compatible and harmonious to the surrounding area, all site impacts have been addressed, suitable site for the use, and commercial and convenient and functional layout, as well as adequate services to support the use. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. When reviewing this site plan, it does meet the C-five standards for development, including setbacks and lot requirements, as well as, we do have specific performance standards for the mini-use, storage use. Those include adequate screening of outdoor storage areas and garbage enclosures. And then reviewing for this site for our landscape standards, the landscape area required is 10% of the site. The applicant is supplying a landscape area of 22% of the site. The north, south, and west buffer yard requirements are met. However, there's a 20-foot utility easement on the east side of the site. This is an easement owned by Crestview Water and Sanitation and prohibits the planting of landscaping on top of that. The applicant has provided the required landscaping for this buffer yard elsewhere on the site, as well as a six-foot privacy fence along that eastern corridor. It should also be noted that the applicant reached out to the neighboring property to the east, which is a residence, to alleviate any concerns that they might have about screening. During the Planning Commission hearing, Planning Commission explored the idea of possibly moving this drive aisle out over top of the easement to provide additional landscaping. This would require collaboration with Crestview as they own the easement. This primary site plan is the one that staff is recommending for approval, but the applicant has listened to the advice of the Planning Commission and reached out to Crestview Water, who said that they have no issue with moving the drive aisle over to that easement as long as manhole covers were provided to access any utilities that may be under that, and have provided a little bit more landscaping along the east side of the building. I can let the applicant speak to, you know, the pros and cons of each site plan. During the site visit, was able to take a few photos of the site and surrounding area on the left side of the screen. On the top photo, it would be a view from Federal Boulevard looking east at the site and a view from West 66th Place looking southwest to the site. On the right side of the screen, you see views up and down Federal Boulevard, both looking north and to the south. During the referral period for this, property owners and occupants within 750 feet of the site were notified. A total of 258 notifications were sent. We did receive one public comment in opposition. They noted the other storage facility in the area and, you know, preferred a less redundant use for this site. During the referral period for referral agents, we sent out referrals to each agency within a mile of the site, and these following agencies responded without concern. During the Planning Commission hearing on January 26, the Planning Commission voted unanimous approval for eight findings of fact, four conditions, and one note to the applicant. So in summary, staff does feel this conforms to the performance standards. It's compatible with the surrounding area. They've addressed the off-site impact and services are available. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with eight findings of fact, four recommended conditions, and one note. These are the recommended conditions, including the expiration date of February 21, 2038, and a recommended note that they shall comply with all building zoning fire, engineering, health codes, and regulations during the development of the site. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thanks.
Any questions for staff? I'm seeing none. Do we have the applicant wish to please, does the applicant wish to speak? Please come on up, state your full name and your address for the record.
Matt Garvalia, 10095 Winding Ridge, Ladoo, Missouri. And really, I'm here to answer any questions. We met with the planning and zoning and took their recommendations into consideration and supplied the other site plan with their recommendation. It is our preferred to stay to the original after talking to the owner of the property, providing the privacy fence and the additional buffer. It works better for our flow. However, we're open to do whatever the staff recommends.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? No. All right. Thank you. Jen, I see you want to speak?
Just real quick for the record, condition number four was actually added as part of a recommendation from Planning Commission, and that has been satisfied as the applicant has considered the alternative site plan, so we don't need to have condition number four as part of your decision today.
Got it. All right. Is there anyone from the public who'd wish to speak or signed up to speak?
I do not have anyone signed up.
Is there anyone who did not sign up but still wishes to speak today on this matter? All right, back to the board for discussion and motions. Commissioner Baca?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion approving RCU 2022-00006 for best box, best box storage, CUP. Conditional use permit with eight findings of fact, three recommended conditions, and one note.
Is that correct? The three or four?
Three, because the four has been satisfied.
Oh. All right, I second that motion.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoratio?
Yes. All right, that's it. Congratulations, and I believe we are adjourned.